Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of CGR Sports Commissioners, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We will open with the pledge being led by Commissioner Brad Wright, followed by an invitation by Commissioner Truman Tinsley, the third. Please join us.
Athlete's league is the best. And to the law, we support the fans, for nations, for the power, and the people who live here in South.
Most questions, Heavenly Father, we're here today to ask your blessings and guidance for the performance of our duties of the official. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us recognize and solve the problems that are presented, make our solutions fair and just to the best interest of everyone. Help us overcome our shortcomings, keep this united as a team, but work for the betterment of the city and its people. In your name, amen. Amen. Thank you.
We need a motion to second amend the agenda to remove item twenty-two, consider a resolution pursuant to the SC, section one forty-seven F, Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, approving the issuance of revenue bonds in an amount not exceed thirty-five million dollars by Griffin Housing Authority for Northside Hills Limited Partnership for the purpose of financing or on or a portion of the cost of acquisition, construction, and equipping of two hundred and sixty-four units multi-family housing development to be located six fifteen Northside Drive, Griffin, Georgia. From the agenda and to amend the item twenty-six to state, consider authorizing travel for Mayor Holbert to attend the GMA Joint Legislative Policy Meeting in Chatsworth, Illinois on September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Hello, Commissioner Ward with the motion, seconded by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. We have five. All right, under presentation and delegation, item one is a recognized, Missy McRue, landfill scale attendant at July twenty twenty-four, solid waste management board of the state, landfill superintendent James Essel will address, and maybe Mr. Edith will be there as well.
Good evening, how are y'all doing tonight?
Good evening, everyone. How y'all doing? My name is James of the landfill superintendent, solid waste, and we have nominated Missy McRue for a recent employee of the strongest link of the chain. And she's been with us for three years now. She is responsible for all the training in Scale House. She came to me when I first started here, interested in going out in the field, running some of the equipment. We got her started, got her going, running, she's been running everything, water truck, everything that we have pretty much in there. She has become the face of the landfill. She's the first one everybody sees at Scale House. Now she's going to be promoted, going out into the field, she's going to be running the D eight, pushing the, pushing the material that comes in. She will be the face of the landfill out there as well. She will also be responsible, she doesn't know it yet, but training her next replacement. So we're proud to have her here for landfill operations. We're proud to have her in the facility and in solid waste, and we've got no complaints about her. She's it. She's it.
Would you outline this list for us, your team lead?
Oh, this is our leader Todd, she's our solid waste manager. This is John, or, I'm sorry, I was nervous, couldn't relate. Water lunch or dinner waffle house. This is Tommy, he's our special age equipment operator, he runs shredder and the excavator. This is John, he's our all-around operator, runs everything, and then myself and Missy.
Congratulations. Do you have any family here, or do you want to say a word?
Um, I have a small word.
Okay, welcome.
Although I, I'm a little nervous speaking in front of people, so my daughter-in-law suggested I take my glasses off and then I wouldn't see anybody. I wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you to Mr. Edith for nominating me to be the Griffin's strongest link for July, and also the people behind the scenes that are allowing me to learn and grow with the city. We have good people that work for the city, but we have really good people that work for solid waste. I know, I'm glad I didn't have to make the decision on who gets the awards around here. And with that being said, thanks again, and y'all have a great night.
Thank you. Did you want to take picture?
Yeah, please.
Oh, you've got the chain. You've got to wear that everywhere.
Thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank God, very much.
Appreciate it. All right, item two is a presentation of the Irish City Golf Classic Charity Fund, in the amount of four thousand three hundred seventy dollars and thirty-four cents. The Five Loaves and Two Fish Food Pantry, golf shop manager Ashley White, and assistant golf shop manager Lawrence Sinsley will address. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For our third annual Irish City Golf Classic, we wanted to support an organization who were directly impacted the local Griffin and Spalding communities. Since nineteen eighty-nine, Five Loaves Food Pantry has served our community and touched the lives of more than forty thousand people. It is our honor, honor to be able to present Five Loaves and Two Fish Food Pantry with this check for four thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-four cents in support of their ongoing mission. We thank you for the opportunity of allowing us to support such great work and things.
We've actually served a lot more than forty thousand people. We serve on average fourteen to nineteen thousand households per year. This money will allow us to purchase over twenty-seven thousand pounds of food, which will go to over seventeen hundred households. So I always say a dollar's a dollar more than I had, a can of food is one more can of food that I have. Our numbers are growing immensely, especially our new clients. That's how I judge what the economy is doing, is how many new clients we get every year. Today in two hours, we had eight new households come to us. That doesn't sound like a lot, but you multiply that eight times five days a week, times three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it adds up pretty quickly. So I want to thank the Griffin Golf Course, all the patrons, the sponsors, the, all of the players, we appreciate it, and we will put it to good use. Three years I've had the opportunity to play in that tournament, and the greens are the best in Georgia, and the dinner beforehand, two-day shamble, two man, and I encourage all the folks that they want a great time coming along next year. Thank you again for y'all's. All right, this time we review financial reports for June twenty twenty-four. Finance Director Deborah Manning Gilbert will address.
Welcome.
Good evening. Today we're going to look at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four. These are un-audited numbers. For the whole year, citywide total operating revenue was a hundred and thirty-four million, which was ninety-nine percent of our projections. The total operating expenses were one hundred and twenty-four million, which is seventy-four percent of our projections. We collected five million, six hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars in local option sales tax, which was six percent above what we projected, and we collected four million, five hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and six dollars in T-SWOT, which was twenty-three percent above our projections.
That closes out the year. Does anybody have any questions this time? Because your big challenge now is getting everything ready for the audit.
Oh, yeah. We're working on it.
Thank you, Deborah, for your presentation. Moving into citizens' comments, at this time, the mayor opens the floor to comment to the audience. Comments should relate to specific agenda items outlined on agenda for a public hearing or have been shared within jurisdiction of the city. The mission meeting serves the purpose of conducting city business and are not a foil for the unlimited expression of its opinion. Subject to the citizens' comment policy adopted on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and posted for public view, all speakers shall be limited to three minutes, which will be strictly followed and enforced. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments, the matters remain in city business, and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for a resolution. With that being said, is there anything on my left side left before the board? Good evening, welcome. Dr. Jones, please state your name, address.
Dr. Shonda Jones, now I don't give my address for safety reasons. I'm coming to speak on behalf of the citizens. I know that the resolution for the Griffin Housing Authority in Northside Hills Limited Partnership for the forty million dollar revenue bond was scratched from the agenda, but there are still things I think that need to be addressed because I know this will be coming back around again. We're trying to figure out what's the actual plan for the residents because they are concerned. They've had meetings canceled, not getting the truth from Northside Limited Partnership or Griffin Housing Authority about what's actually going to happen with this project. They are concerned about long-term displacement, some of the things that we've seen before with these projects, such as what's happened with formerly Sunshine, as well as when Fairmont was being renovated, and not to mention the issues we have with Griffin Housing Authority concerning the Regency apartment that may have their certificate of occupancy pool on the twenty-second. And given that even though they knew this and they told us we could come and get applications for the residents, their offices have been closed since Friday and are closed all this week, and that's very concerning. We wanted to address the issue in the potential resolution where OCGA thirty-six dash eighty-two dash one hundred would be waived that would require the project bond audit. Why would you waive the requirement of bond audit? That's very concerning for us. It's like writing a blank forty million dollar check with no accountability, especially when our elected officials are always preaching conservatism and transparency. I feel that it's kind of crazy that you all trust the Housing Authority and this company so much because your citizens don't trust them at all, given their past experiences and current experiences that they're dealing with. Does this project need to happen? Absolutely, but not with, without some type of plan and accountability, because ultimately you all are holding the bag, but once this project starts and there are issues, who can the citizens come to with their complaints? They don't vote for you all. They, they live in the county. So, so how does that work? We definitely need better oversight of the Griffin Housing Authority, and I hope to see that because you are responsible for appointing some of those members. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Is there anybody else on my left side left before the board? Anybody else on my left side? Yes, ma'am, welcome. Bye, thank you. Please come to the mic, please give your name and address.
My name is Okisha Johnson. I live in Northside Hills apartment. I have been in Northside Hills apartment since, for six years now. For four years, I have been dealing with bad water leak, mold. It don't got so bad, I have five kids, and me, that's all who live in my household. It's so bad, we walking in water. I'm cooking in mold, just every day. We keep go praying, we keep go praying, it's getting worse though, and worse though, I know, my child keep falling, don't nobody care. I don't know what's going on, I just want to say that because it don't got to the point, it's so bad, I know. I hope y'all make the right decisions and set that thing down, which I have to continue to suffer like this. It is pretty hell for the people I know, just because we live in an apartment, that don't mean we don't pay rent. Some of us pay rent, I pay rent every month, and they talking to us so nasty, they haven't answered the phone knowing this week, we don't know nothing. It was, if we don't have no money to pay, all the time, they want to bring us to court, but they don't want to speak to me. So I just asked y'all to have a heart and set it down. The pipe is on the hour of what you said near your feet. I'd like be up to three or four hundred dollars, I know, and I just asked y'all to have a heart and set that thing all the way down. Thank y'all for y'all trying, God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Is there anybody else on my left, left before the board? Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Is there anybody else on my left side left before the board? Is there anybody on my right side left before the board? Yes, Ms. Morrison. I'll get back to you. Ms. Morrison, a question.
Tina Marie Morrison, two two six Kentucky Avenue, and I'm here once again to talk about the yard waste fee. The yard waste fee, I'm not sure if you know, is not listed in M-UNICODE. The yard waste fee is not listed in the City of Griffin fee schedule. Also, we're not able to locate the yard waste fee for multifamily buildings in the City of Griffin Customer Service Policy Manual. I moved here six years ago. Fast forward five years, I discovered my son is being overcharged for yard waste. My neighbors and myself inquire with Griffin's Customer Service and Sanitation Department. Since June of twenty twenty-four, we have been told everyone has to pay yard waste, which contradicts what I was told in two thousand and nineteen, which is when the city stopped billing me for yard waste for my jointy neighbor, for all, and we were all issued credit for the overcharges. So I addressed this at the city commission meeting on July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have since been told that the City of Griffin is per turn, is performing an internal audit of the yard waste fee. It is our understanding that this internal audit is to determine how many multifamily properties or units may have been affected by this overcharge. However, all we can do is speculate. As late as today, the City of Griffin will not confirm the policy with myself or my neighbor until the audit is complete. That could take months. Ironically, another customer affected by these overcharges did receive confirmation today that we are correct. The city was not supposed to be charged in account in multifamily buildings with more or more units for yard waste, which leads to another concern. When I called today, I was once again told everyone in the city has to pay yard waste. I don't blame, I don't blame the representative, she's only limited to her training. However, the city, while you're performing this audit, you have failed to take corrective action in training your customer service representatives on the correct policy. You're still telling people everybody has to pay it, and that's not the case. Since the policy as we understand it was confirmed with another customer and not myself, I will once again follow the complaint procedure and submit these concerns to the Central Services Manager and Sanitation Department. It's going to be hard to trust the findings of an internal audit when it appears the city is choosing not to be transparent in answering questions for certain residents like myself and my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Ma'am, in the rear, you have to raise your hand. Good evening, welcome. Name and address, the rest.
My name is Sean Hollis, my address is six fifteen Northside Drive, apartment two two eight. I've been a resident out there for like eight years. I was even included in the, when we had got burned out and lost everything. My main concern with the whole matter at hand is it does need to be redone, and it really does. But the question I have in my mind, it stays in my mind because from my first prior incident with them, is what are we going to do? Because when we got burned out, we didn't get no help. Only what we got was from the Red Cross, and it wasn't enough, you know, for us as families to be able to keep our kids in a stable place. Couple of us, a lot of us ended up with nowhere to go until we was able to get back in out there. Right now, what we're dealing with is, if we do, we're having a meeting tomorrow. They have scheduled us to meet for tomorrow, but this is like the third meeting that we both have already had, but now we're having a meeting. And in this meeting tomorrow, what I'm afraid of is what are, what are we going to do? Because at the same time, I know they're trying to make things better, but are they going to make sure everybody's secure? School just went back in. Kids, a lot of parents don't have transportation or nothing, even if they do offer motel room. Some of them still cannot get their kids to school and stuff. That's my main concern with all of them. Me, myself, I have transportation, I can make sure me and mine get where they need to go, but we don't have nowhere to just run to go. I have family, I have residents, but at the same time, as all of us know, a lot of times your family can't put you up and help you with your kids. That's my only question with all of them. I want it to be done, I really need, I really want it to be done because in my unit now, even though I've, I've been living in the unit I'm living in now, I've been living in it four years, and my floors are, they keep patching, 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 and like now, they just patched all floors, what, a month and a half ago, not even a month and a half ago, and my floors are booked back up again. I suffer with mold, several things, huts been in, they supposed to fix the things that just had, they had just recorded on them, they patched, nothing's still fixed. You know, and the only thing my, my worry is about all y'all is what are we going to do? Because right now, like I looked on the internet yesterday and it's like, that's when I came to the meeting, because I had kept calling them and asking them, what are they going to do? Because you keep giving us the papers saying we're having a meeting that we're going to have to relocate, but you can't really tell us what's the choices of what are we going to do? So that's the only thing I'm worried about, y'all. I'm just hoping that everything works out for the best, including myself and everyone else out there. And even also in the Regency as well, because they going through a storm as well. And a lot of us, when we got those apartments, what we did not realize that they really was not like Fairmount or whatever, as far as directly with the Housing Authority. See what I'm saying? So we was lost a lot. And I realized when I got burned out.
All right, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Allen, for sharing. Is there anybody else on my left that has this? Welcome. Name and address, the rest.
My name is Kanaya Davis, I stay in six one five Northside Drive, apartment one B. And we also, everything they're saying is so true, like I had to get in touch with the coal enforcement for somebody to come to my apartment. I have a, at the moment, I had a one-month-old and a one-year-old at the moment, and my apartment was flooded. My whole bathroom, couldn't use the bathroom and none of that, like the electricity, it's messing up the electricity for people to cook, all of that. And we had to get in touch with the coal enforcement because the rent office not answering their phone calls or none of that. And they getting mad at us because we trying to get help, and when we get help, they think we against them, but we just want to live online too in a safe way too, because we have kids. And they, it pretty much given they don't care, because they giving us the runaround here and there, they keep pushing away these meetings and all of that, and they say we safe, but we don't feel safe at all. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Is there anybody else on my left, please come before the board? Is there anybody on my right side? Thank you all for being here. Moving to the consent agenda, we have items four through thirteen. Do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Tinsley with a motion to approve. Commissioner Murray with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero approval of consent agenda. Moving to the regular agenda, consider the minutes of City Griffin Board of Commissioners' workshop meeting on July twenty-three, twenty-four. Commissioner Tinsley and Ward, McCord were absent. We have a motion to approve. Mrs. Murray with a motion, second. Seconded by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero, one extension, Mr. Tinsley. Item fifteen is considered a minute of City Griffin Board of Commissioners' rectum meeting on July twenty-third, twenty-four. Commissioner McCord was absent. We have motion to approve. Commissioner Ward with a motion, seconded by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero on the minutes of the regular meeting. Item sixteen is considered a resolution to adopt proposed changes to the T Griffin fee schedule, last updated February twenty twenty-four. We have motion to approve the resolution. Commissioner Ward with a motion, second. Seconded by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero on the fee schedule. Item seventeen is considered a resolution authorized the mayor and city manager to execute a quitclaim deed to Meredith Holmes Inc., showing the City of Griffin claims no interest in or claim upon forty foot of unimproved right-of-way of Decatur Street, point two three acres described in the deed. Commissioner Ward with a motion to approval, second. Seconded by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the resolution, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item eighteen is considered renewal agreement with Tamsara Inc., current vendor for vehicle gateway licenses, amount of hundred three thousand, six hundred nine dollars and thirty-six cents, for initial term of twelve months with a two optional twelve-month auto renewals and a total maximum life term of thirty-six months. That's it. Commissioner Ward with a motion, seconded by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the agreement, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero approval. Item nineteen is considered a water sale agreement of the City of Hampton for the sale of wholesale drinking water. Commissioner Tinsley with a motion to approve. Seconded by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero of approval for the contract. Item twenty is considered contract of sugar cleaning and CCTV services for performance contracting, best response to bidder not exceed three hundred thousand, seven hundred nine dollars, seventy-two cents. Commissioner Ward with a motion. Commissioner Tinsley with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero fee. Item twenty-one is considered a resolution accepting any and all title and interest in the property, commonly known as seven one seven North Avenue to seven two one North Avenue, Griffin, Georgia, of a quitclaim deed from Griffin area habitat humanity Inc., the City of Griffin, and authorized the city manager for the quitclaim deed in the real estate records of the Superior Court Spalding County. This is Ward with a motion. Seconded by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the resolution, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero approval. Item twenty-two is deleted from the agenda. Item twenty-three is considered a claim for personal injury by Ashley Minati, based upon any item noted stated July thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, from attorney Charles Steve Graham. Staff recommends denial.
Make the motion, Dr. Jones.
Commissioner Murray with a motion to deny. Seconded by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of this denial, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero denial. Item twenty-four, commissioners appoint one board member to fill the unexpired term of Sydney Cole, who resigned from the tribunal council on July ten, two thousand and twenty-four. The term is set to expire on twelve thirty-one, twenty-fourth this year. We have one nomination, Emily Paulbrook. Do we have a motion, or do we have a nomination of this whole? Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Do we have a motion to close nomination? Commissioner Ward with a motion. With a second. Seconded by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor of closing nominations and serving this culprit, please signal by raising your hand. That's six, zero for Ms. Paulbrook. Item twenty-five, commissioners appoint member of Griffin audit business and tourism association for the outfield term expired twelve thirty-one, twenty-five, to succeed Yasmin Howard, who resigned from the association on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. twenty twenty-four. We have, Mr. Jason Chance is only about ten in the book, so we have nine nominations. You nominate Jason Chance?
Yes.
Okay. So Trimmer Tinsley nominate Jason Chance, and then you make motion to close nomination, Trimmer Tinsley. Second by Holly Murray. All in favor of closing nominations? Like Jason Chance to be part of Griffin Auto Business and Tourism Association? Please signal by raising hand. Six, zero. And finally, then consider authorizing travel for Mayor Holberg to attend the GMA conference, like his name policy committee meeting at Chateau Alon on September fourth and five, two thousand and twenty-four. Commissioner Tinsley with a motion. Second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor? Please signal by raising hand. Six, zero. And that's our agenda for tonight. City manager report?
I think congratulations to Missy. To go from being not really knowing, you've been a handful operation and hard work of steel, now grabbing these little goldies and some ski and stuff, and actually get out there with our team and how to do that. Exciting. And another exciting thing is all of the commercial development that I'm doing on that list is pretty much a full page. So I look forward to the very new year. They're having some groundbreaking with everyone to celebrate that. There's some of the cool stuff, a big apartment suite, but then also the hotel, see how the green opens soon with that. But just got from the chamber, a notice that we started celebrating their dream opening on Sunday seventh, and they are the partner of ours on what it's very deep to extend. That's the two big pieces of our workshops, but it's got a weapon so you can get done and walk down there together. Also, just an update, the yard waste audit has been completed. We looked at all of those, the RVs parts and all of the non-RV parts, to compare why it is occurring that way. And we are meeting our staff to see what those sort of, if there's any kind of rhyme or reason what that is, and then also bringing that back to the recommendation. We took it to August workshop because there isn't a policy that hasn't adopted by the board. So we need to keep that at the next workshop. And then also, I did receive an update from the Collins in regards to the tax head desk, what we're going to do to set our miller's base. And it has been provided, but she does not have it finalized. The tax decision was given that morning. I hope to the best of our people, that's for you tomorrow, so that we can start working on what a miller's base could be like for you all as well. Not a blowout?
Do you, Drew, or you, either of y'all want to make a comment about the Northside Drive? So then, the rest of the folks that are here, I understand where we're at.
A housing law has passed for the county. That hearing was held by hearing office, and the housing authority pointed five AM thirty from here. So they're hearing off. Well, they're hearing up pretty fast in the month. We have received notice about two weeks ago after the hearing. Then causes this boy, here they parent board basically off the housing authority, ripping out the authority. But unique to the housing authority, they have jurisdiction up to ten miles outside of the city limits. So they can do projects and incorporate Spalding County. And actually, the ten miles, I think, possibly over into Pike County and property up in the Henry County. So they have greater extraterrestrial jurisdiction than you'd normally think on City of Oregon. This project is not in the city. They had come to us, like I said, about a week, ten days ago, and asked, we put this on the agenda for tonight, which we did. And then we discovered late last week that the project was not in the city and they had represented to us. So I did talk to their attorney about this, and we pulled it off the agenda side. They're also going to have to have Spalding County to conduct a temporary hearing also, a temporary approval. So it's got to have the approval of both the county and the city before the authority then issue bond. It does not obligate financially either city or the county. Only the authority is obligated to repay with those bonds, bond issues.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Anybody else that you have for tonight's program? Thank you. Commissioner Curtis?
I mean, I don't, I hate the fact that residents live in that kind of condition. It doesn't matter if in the county or the city. If you're saying it's the poor, where you got kids there, people want to live, and they want to live, you know, decent. I don't know what the board could do. Like I said, I'm you. But if, like, if you want to talk to me about something, I'm here for you. Because it saddened me when the young lady that got us talking from Spalding Heights, I mean, it put me in tears. And I'm just sick of stuff like that. That's just it. I'm glad you all came, and I want to work with whoever, but that, it harms, it make my heart sad for her to stand and say that. And we sit here, and we just look at her, you know, even though we can't move on back. I understand it. But this is my time to respond. And I just don't know what we can do, but what I'm saying is, I feel what you're going through. And you are, even though you live in the county, you know, you still a part of residence in Greece, you know. So we all should work together at the one. They're trying to do something about that, those conditions out there. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Curtis. Commissioner Murray?
I don't know how I can help that. Commissioner Curtis, thank you, everybody, for coming. I just want to make a comment. As we were talking about solid waste today and our strongest community, Missy, I understand there was some equipment failure in yard waste pickup today. I just want to tell everybody and share with you what I saw. I saw city crews that picked up the slack, and it was steering heavy school traffic. And I want to say those guys were incredible, and they were actually helping, watching out, to watch out for the kids. And I just thought that was great. They were out there doing their job, picking up everything, but looking out for the kids in the community. So I want to just tell everybody about it.
Thank you, Ms. Tinsley. Nothing further. Good point. I would do want to mention, girl, your community town hall meeting was excellent on the first of August. So thank you for the opportunity for us to be here. You did a great job organizing that, keeping it controlled. Thank you for doing that. In regards to the residents, unfortunately, just outside city limits, and the housing authority has done some amazing projects and partnerships in terms of redeveloping property. So I'm very optimistic that the outcome will be very favorable. Hopefully, you will get answers to expect in the days after the process. In regards to staff, I just want to say thank you for y'all's hard work. We did have a wonderful second battery this week. Anytime because on the scene with volunteers, ice control, it's spectacular. And congratulations also to the staff for hitting the CEO issue for P-Mop Brewing Company. So that has been a big hit. Okay. Good job. We got to finally have the breweries open at home. A lot of shout-outs from people from all of them. It's just wood.
I was not going to say that. But I sit on the housing authority as a liaison for the city. And I'm sorry about what you all are going through. But Spalding Heights is a private development. It's not a governed by the city. It's not governed by the county. They get their money from the federal government, from the state government. And there's a new, there's a new owners there. And all the housing authority is doing is underwriting the bond for them to be able to do it. The housing authority will not be governing, giving out vouchers. All of this comes from this company, this company. The only thing the housing authority do is underwrite the bond. And they're giving us this notice to vote on as a courtesy. They don't want you to have to do that. So I'm like, I'm sorry. I hate it for y'all, but because the housing authority has decided to underwrite the bond, my understanding is that it's going to be a new development. They're going to give vouchers. And if you, but however that works, it's going to have to be with the company, the development, the people that own the property. So really, in actuality, the housing authority does not have to answer to the city or the county for anything.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Murray with a motion. Second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor, please raise your hand.